But would be a student in their senior year who would say, I only need these credits for graduation. So I would go out on a limb to say that those are not students that are at risk of not graduating. Those would be students that would be in extra classes.
Right.
And so if students are taking less than a full load, it's because they think I've got this wrapped up. And so I would say they would...
That's smaller credit pressure.
Right. All right. So your question to me is, I don't have any data to back it up, but my opinion would be that those students graduate at very, very high rates, like 100%, or they would be in school all day.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know we're running tight on time, so I know you guys did a lot of work, so I will...
Thank you. I appreciate it. So for the benefit of time, I'll just make two more connections for the group. Allegedly during the school day, right. Just two more connections. One piece is that what Project Ten allows us to do is to monitor cohorts of children. So for instance, our incoming ninth graders have already been analyzed, they've already been looked at, and they've already made a person-to-person contact if they're at risk for graduation. So our school teams, with the district support as well, are really looking at this whole cohort model and ensuring that our children have access to support early on. We do know that ninth grade is a very important year. It's kind of like a make it or break it year for children. And we know that the ninth grade year often mirrors what happens as an 11th grader in terms of their success in high school. So we want to make sure that all of our children who are at risk are getting that absolute support that they're needing. And some of that support is in school. Much of that support is in school, but a lot of that support also is from other outside organizations. Is it a student that's at risk and might benefit from having a big brother, a big sister? Is it a student who may need access to mental health because of some family dynamics or some other pieces that are going on in the child's life? And those things, we don't know unless we make that connection with the child. And our schools are doing a tremendous job. I'm really enjoying working, and I can probably speak for Millie, and I know Steve has enjoyed this for years, of working with our high school leaders, working with our high school counselors, and our high school dropout prevention programs, our PBD programs, to make sure that these connections are happening. They're amazing leaders, they're amazing teachers, and they're doing great things for our kids who so, so deserve it. So I just want to focus your attention to the last page of the slide, and I see that many of you have that up there. And if we can just put the last page of the PowerPoint slide, thank you, Jordan, put that up there. Because what this shows us, and you have the color copy in front of you, what this shows us is how Sarasota County is doing. Yeah, that's exactly what I thought. I'm like, yeah, this is great. So we're not going to answer that question right now, but first we'll answer the question. It does look great, though. It does look great. What this is showing us is how we compare in relation to the state. How we compare in relation to the state. And if you look closely, you'll see that Sarasota County, for years, has outperformed the state or met the state expectations, and it's exciting to see that. You did ask the question about what does 17 look like.
That number.
Okay. So, right, it's not on there. It's not on there, because this is the actual final on the lag data, as Mr. Kingsley said. It'll be coming out soon. It'll be coming out soon. So what our projections are showing us, to answer your question, for this year, and these are projections that I just do want to qualify a little bit. Our project and projections historically have been within one to two percentage points accurate in terms of projections. We did talk a little bit about House Bill 769. You're realin' me in, but I'm going to keep going. House Bill 769. And we want to just make the statement that it could be more or less based on the fact of what you just described earlier so well, Dr. Bowden. But our projections for the 17, 18 school year, Millie, why don't you finalize and finish up with that?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll give you a minute to think since it got shifted over to you. But one thing I just, from a trend line, that was fascinating and don't know if you could speak to it.
No, no, no.
So if you watch the state, the state has a pretty consistent trend line, whereas, and we have a consistent trend line, but it's backwards, forwards, backwards, forwards, backwards, forwards. So, and I know...
You know, we talked about that. We've talked about that. I think we, you know, it's, you know, sticking, sometimes it's just sticking your finger in the dyke, and you're dealing with an issue, and you put additional resources, and, you know, but we have. I don't know that I can answer.
I mean, that spoke to me.
That is a good point. We've looked at it, and, you know, but I'm going to tell you, this year...
Every time we've got a game, we gave a couple points back.
But it's...
This year, I think you'll see that we're going to buck that trend.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think she wanted to answer Eric's question for him.
I will answer, I will try to answer both. The first, I will say that from a school-based perspective, I can tell you that cohorts change. They have their own personality, and sometimes it's just the group that you're given. We are expected to move up. Right now, it looks like we're right at about 88% for 2017. We know that there's a little bit of wiggle room there, based on the new provisions in the House bill, and there are always some outliers out there that go to certain programs that could get walked back to us. Those are hard to pin down. But we are confident, hopefully, that there will be growth, and there will be even more growth this upcoming year. Our goal is 90%.
We're hoping Rodney will find that additional point, maybe bump that up to 89%.
There you go. He's working on it.
He will do the locator statewide to try to find those students.
That's very exciting.
I just want to tell you, thank you. I'm excited to work with these individuals that are here, and with our IT department and our research and assessment department. It's an amazing process and exciting.
Jane.
So you like the job?
I do like the job.
You're doing a great job. You're doing a great job.
I love the job.
You're doing a great job.
That's awesome. Wonderful. Honey, Shirley or Carolyn? It's good. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm excited that you guys have laser focus on it.
I had a brief question of Dr. Bowden. When you talked about them going to private schools, do you know if they were accredited?
Yes, they are accredited. Fully accredited by Southern Association.
In Pensacola.
So that if they got their graduation, they could take it to college supposedly?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Because I think we've got one that isn't necessarily accredited here in Sarasota.
Now, this is a company, and I'm intentionally not naming the name, but there is an individual company who markets that if you can't give them a diploma, we can.
Wow.
And so for a cost, they accept those credits in. They do have to complete a minimum number of credits with them, and then they issue the diploma, but it is a fully accredited diploma. I certainly don't begrudge a parent that might engage in that program, but I have huge issues with using public dollars to circumvent the graduation requirements for public schools.
Thank you very much. And I know we're on the time aspect, but I think we're all right. So mid-year success stories, Dr. Kingsley and Brent Hirsch.
I just want to let Dawn and Rodney and Denise and Millie and Steve know that if they want to come back in January, because I did hustle them through that, so they skipped some parts, and do the big reveal. You'll know in January.
That's certain. Awesome. Thank you so much.
And that was supposed to be a celebration, so...
It did. It did?
Yes. Okay. Okay. And, you know, the real celebration is what happens in the school every day with those children, where they make personal connections with the staff at school. But I asked the person who I could think of, no better person, to really pull together a few success stories, some real celebrations of impact in our district, and that was Brian. So he pulled together a really great presentation. You will enjoy this.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Board Superintendent. It's really an honor to be here, and as a Program Director for Any Given Child, which is access and equity for arts education, I've really used that art side to really, artists tell stories of humanity. And in this case, right now, I'm going to really talk about the human element and the human story within our district. It's really been a great honor to talk to folks throughout this district. I'm no expert, but a synthesizer of a lot of this information. And if I can, for just a moment, I want to talk about some impetus. Now, I got to participate in the Gulf Coast Leadership Institute this summer, and one of the greatest takeaways of that is realizing that the best vision is truly a shared vision. And in that case, it's really complicated. It gets very messy, and it takes hard work. But through this hard work, together, we can all be part of successful outcomes, and in this case, benefiting students. So together, we can ask, what does success look like? And we'll see, I had the pleasure of meeting with many folks through, over the course of time, and I found two overarching themes in this district. Number one, together, we're creating a safe, positive, and engaging learning environment where everyone wants to be a part of. And second, we're finding comfort in struggle. We are realizing that when things get tough, we can look for those positive goals and outcomes. Summarizing that concept best is one of my great colleagues, Maria Schiller-Luera, who helped me curate this presentation. And as a theater artist, she would often stay. It's not about stepping out of your comfort zone, but more or less stepping into your growth zone. So let's just take a few moments, and we'll take a look at some of the initiatives that are happening throughout this district. VHS Connects. VHS Connects is this great initiative at Venice High School, and we've talked to Principal Eric Jackson and his whole team. And really, the intention of VHS Connects was to make sure students can discover something and/or someone that motivates them to get connected to school. A student's sense of belonging at the school is important to academic achievement, and students are more likely to succeed in school and want to come when they believe that adults in the school care about their learning and care about them as individuals. So, once a week, on Mondays, students can go to vhsconnects.com, and they select a course of their interest. It could be for academic enrichment, or it could just be something in general. It might be something like kindness rock painting, or basket weaving, film studies, kickball, or maybe even ultimate frisbee. And I would tell you that at vhsconnects.com, there on the last Monday, 73 different sponsored activities were included in Academic Enrichment and Support. 73, that's quite a bit. And when you look even further about connection and engagement, 100% of the faculty and staff at the school were participating. Furthermore, 100% of the students on campus were participating in VHS Connects. So this is what success looks like.
When did he start that program?
So it started this school year.
That's amazing.
Beginning of this school year.
Phenomenal.
Right?
Yeah.
So just started this school year, and this is what success looks like. Administrators, principals, teachers connecting and building relationships directly with students on a one-to-one basis or group setting. And the teachers and administration throughout Venice High School can tell you, when they go to the grocery store and run into parents, the parents are often talking about the anecdotes of why their students want to go to school because of VHS Connects. Let's talk about reading recovery. Reading recovery, which you know well, of course, a highly effective research-based intervention of one-to-one tutoring for first-grade students who have the most difficulty in reading and writing. And highly-trained teachers spend 30 minutes a day with each student on one-to-one for up to 20 weeks. And as soon as students are up to level expectations, the lessons are discontinued, and a new round begins. Right now, as you know, this year, all 34, there are 34 reading recovery teachers in all of our elementary schools, and that, right now, that's serving 137 students directly. And 690 other students are receiving support from those reading recovery teachers. While we won't know the exact stats until February of Round One, the lead teacher, Lisa Fisher, reports that right now, students, uh-oh, students, students are on track and progressing at an accelerated rate, more so than they have the past two years. Therefore, more students will be reaching Round Two sooner, which opens up more spots. This is significant, because as Round Two, students will have more time to continue the full program. It also allows for the potential of Round Three students, even more significant. So with 34 reading recovery teachers this year, the minimum of students serviced will be 272, and with the hopes of Round Three, almost 300 students by reading recovery. This is what success looks like. We see readers who were once struggling, now gaining confidence, embracing the challenge, working hard, getting back on track, and back on level.
Dr. Kingsley, perhaps you can answer this. 34 teachers, is that enough? Are we training tutors or other people to work with them, or is this a program that purely works through those teachers only?
We had 14 volunteers trained this year in October, and another training is going to be in January by one of our really superstar reading recovery teachers. And we had the OSU professor, Lee McGee, create six to eight modules that are being used by the reading recovery teachers to train their teacher colleagues in first grade, in kindergarten, and in second grade. And we have plans to have little video clips that we put on our website that help parents and train parents on reading strategies to keep their children loving, finding that joy in reading.
Great.
Let's move on to, is this working? Check, check. Check, check. Thank you. Let's move on to visible learning. This is great work that's coming throughout the district at all levels, much of John Hattie's work, which really is key. And first, making student learning visible to the teachers, so they can see their impact on learning. And further, making teaching visible to students, so they can be on their own lifelong journey of learning and be their own teacher ultimately. This year, there have been three intensive days of professional learning for all teams, for teams throughout all of our schools, K-12. And while this is across levels, let me focus on elementary for just a moment. Checking in with Executive Director Chris Renoff and Kelly Ellington with curriculum instruction and planning and development, all 23 of the elementary schools collected data for students and teachers. And there were some aha moments. Several schools asked, for example, what does good learning look like at our schools? First, for students, and then for teachers. Answers were not the same. And while teachers know and understand strategies and approaches, concepts, and sometimes jargon, students still often reflected on behavior, compliance, not necessarily the learning. Yet, our administrators and teachers rallied, especially when it comes to mind frames. So this is what success looks like. I love this door frame. You see, this is at Tatum Ridge Elementary, and Mrs. Ramos's room. Don't waste a good mistake, learn from it. So from the very moment our students enter the door, they know it's a safe place to grow, learn, and struggle. And here at Cranberry Elementary, you can see the significance of the teacher-student relationship, because ultimately, when teachers are clear about learning intentions and talk to students about the learning, students can set and reach their own goals. So I want to talk to you lastly, lastly, finally, about our restorative strategies out of Pupil Support Services. And Rex Ingrick is the champion and leader of this initiative, which is really essentially about improving the school environment through healthy conversations, where the goals are to establish a safe school culture, reduce inappropriate behaviors, promote academic engagement, increase empathy and accountability, and decrease the suspension rate. To date, right now, 407 of our teachers, administrators, counselors, school psychologists at all of our elementary and middle schools have been trained in restorative strategies. That means now, with nine district trainers, we are systemically moving into the high schools next. So next steps, we're really talking about building community and building our capacity in restorative strategies.
Can I interrupt really quickly?
Yep.
And you don't necessarily have to respond to this, because I don't want to unfairly ask a data point, which you weren't prepared to. But for the superintendent, I know this is also questions we've talked about as it relates to restorative justice. I'd love to have a follow-up to see how those numbers are moving, hopefully, down dramatically as it relates to suspensions. But again, you don't, I know that wasn't part of this presentation, but I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity.
Thank you for that. So that brings me to our next and final image. This is what success looks like. And I love, there's this word wall here. Yep, there we go. Our word wall at Woodland Middle School. That's art teacher, Mr. Jenkins. And again, he's a shining example of teacher connecting with students, creating a safe place to grow, learn, struggle, and really achieve. So that's some of the success stories. I'd be remiss if I just didn't say, tonight is the first night of Hanukkah for many of our families celebrating. And if I can even connect this directly to what we've just talked about, if you spin the dreidel on Hanukkah, you'll see it stands for Neis Kadol HaYasham, which means a great miracle happened there. And I think it's actually no mistake, this is no miracle, that so many people work incredibly hard collectively and together to really create an environment where so many people, our young people, can benefit and succeed. So thank you for this opportunity.
Wonderful.
Happy Hanukkah.
TJ, hi. Any comments before he leaves?
Other than the fact that this was great information, and Brian, you did an excellent job. Thank you very much. This is the material that we like to hear.
Yeah. Jane.
For myself, not that going into the weeds, that's the stuff that I'm, you guys are responsible for, but an overview that you just gave, that's what I'm interested in.
We go through the weeds a lot, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
And it was time to give you some real celebration points, so Brian did a great job.
Jane.
I just wanted to say to Dr. Kingsley, yesterday, I spent most of my day in middle schools in Northport. And Paige Detman, Dr. Detman, who's our former middle school executive director, was here with a Christian school from Elatchua County who was viewing some of the things that we're doing in our STEM classes. And it went very well. But I was most impressed with the engagement that I saw on behalf of our students, because they are truly engaged. And I think that these, there were like 15 high school teachers who were looking at putting this into place at a school, private school called The Rock. And they broke into groups and went into various classrooms. The science teachers went into science classrooms, the English teachers went into English classrooms, and so forth. But they were really amazed at the design of the classes, the work groups that were working together, and how totally engaged they were, and the vocabulary they were using, and how purposeful the instruction was. So I just want to say to our middle school teachers at those schools in Northport, a big thanks, because it was very well received.
That's great. We're working hard on that visible learning, so making students thinking visible and teachers learning visible. It's exciting.
Thank you. And also, Brian, thank you for the presentation. I am one of the data junkies as well that likes to look at that. I think it's part of our responsibility. But I really, what I like about this is it speaks to the culture, which as much as we can look at test scores and data, the culture and learning environment is just as critical. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, that invisible learning never worked.
Next, so we're on schedule, just to note. Next item was Sky Academy-Inglewood. And Mitzi Corquin is going to join us, I believe. It has you listed here, so.
Always happy to come up with you, Jen.
So I just wanted to engage you in a conversation about a request that has come from Sky Academy. Just a little background information. Sky Academy in Inglewood has a unique contractual relationship with the district that is different than any other charter school, and it is, has its roots, and it's just, it's the last contract that the board entered into. And their contract specifies that they receive referendum funding, which is $1,275 per student, only for those students who reside in Sarasota County. And so that is the only school that we have that contractual relationship with. It would be remiss if I didn't mention that in conversations with their board chair, that they have risen from a C to an A, and to put this conversation into that context. But they have requested if we would consider modifying our contract with them. And so before I dedicate staff time to renegotiating the contract with Sky-Inglewood, what the board's feelings would be if we modified the contract with Sky-Inglewood to allocate referendum dollars based on their enrollment, and did not attempt to segregate them based on where they reside.
Well, I believe that since we pay for the referendum goes to students that come from Manatee County into some of our academies and from other parts of the state, I believe that Sky Academy in Inglewood should also receive the funds from Charlotte County. I really think that that's fair, because that's the only one that we're making the distinction against, and not the others.
Shirley.
Were you saying they are asking us to modify it so that we pay for the Sarasota County students?
No, ma'am. We are currently paying for the Sarasota County students. It's their out-of-county students, predominantly Charlotte County, that attend Sky-Inglewood, which they do not receive referendum dollars.
And what is the percentage?
In the current year, 25.6% of the enrollment at Sky Academy-Inglewood comes from Sarasota County. 74.4% of those students come from out-of-county. I do not know the county of origin.
I'm the one, I think, who kind of pushed this in the beginning, and we get some students from out-of-county at our other charter schools, but not predominantly. And you're looking at 75% of the students coming from out-of-county. It's our local taxpayers, and I've heard from our local taxpayers, that they think the money should go to our students. And I don't agree with opening up to, you know, 75% of their students coming from Charlotte County. I know even Charlotte County, school board members were like upset with us when we built that school, knowing that we were going to be targeted, this school was going to be targeting Charlotte County students. And they've been losing students, and they were not happy with it to begin with. And I think when they came before us and asking for that contract, we were kind of clear. So I just think our taxpayers, you know, raise that extra referendum dollars with the intention of helping our students from Sarasota County.
Jane? Eric, did you...
I didn't raise my hand.
Okay, sorry, Jane.
Well, I think there's a small percentage. How many students do we have, Mitzi, in that school? 170?
177.
So...
227.
Pardon?
227. Yes, ma'am.
So 75% of 227. We have a large...
169.
Pardon?
169 students.
169 students, okay. I knew there was 169 something. Which equates to how much money in referendum dollars? 210, or 210,000? Okay, I got that right. I know that in North County, we do have, not that high a percentage, but we do have Arts and Science, School of Arts and Science, I think sends a bus to Manatee County every day, and we have a better than, a larger amount that I think we might guess in some students coming from out-of-county. So I think that we should either give all of our, this is, you know, something that hurts the school, and it hurts the students. And now with choice, and the fact that they have moved up to an A, I am in favor of amending our contract and giving them that money, because they, I think, if we're going to give it to one, we need to give it to all of our students.
Eric?
I agree with Jane on this issue. I mean, this is a city, Inglewood, where they don't have a middle school on the Sarasota side, and they wanted to have a middle school. And we decided, for whatever reason, there's not enough area for us to build a middle school. So what did the community do? Community went out and built their own middle school. Meanwhile, some of their students are going over to Charlotte, and we don't send referendum dollars over to Charlotte for our students. We don't say, hey, you're getting 100 of our students, we want to make sure that our taxpayer students are taken care of. And so you're a Sarasota resident, and we're forcing you to send it to another county, which, let's face it, isn't as good as our county, and we're not sending money over to those people. So I don't see a problem with them saying, hey, you know, why shouldn't we be treated like everybody else? You're treating, there's no middle school that we're competing with here. We're not taking people from, which typically the complaint about charter schools is you're taken from our other middle school, and they're not. It's a locally-owned organization. It's not a big, you know, corporation out of Virginia. It's a local entity. And just a point of disclosure, my wife's on the Sky board, but that's not going to impact my ability to discuss fairly and confidently, because we disagree on more things than we agree on. Hi, Christine, she's watching. But I think that we should treat them like we treat all the other schools. And I think it's more so for them, because they're in a unique position where they don't have a middle school to go to if they wanted to. And the only middle school in Sarasota, essentially, the only school, you know, in town, so to speak, is that school. So I think that we've made that decision not to do that, so we should live with that decision.
You know, and I think it, I'm very glad this conversation's coming up, because I believe that was my first year on the board when their contract came forward. And that was the first, and from a little history background, I think that was the first time this board had ever considered not sharing referendum dollars. And I think for people to understand why, because I remember very much struggling on that particular topic on this particular school, is because at that time, that year, we had 11 applicants from charter schools. And I believe that there was a sense and a concern that not, that this, that there were, the referendum dollars in of itself were attracting a variety of charter schools were, the referendum dollars in of itself were attracting a variety of charter schools, not focused on what the students or community needed, but the perception could have been, you know, for the financial benefits of the referendum dollars. So you bring in Sky Academy, who has illustrated, not only are they a local board, very active, but then they have now illustrated success. And I think that, and then tie that into, yes, in fact, I think every student should be looked at as a student. If it's going, if they're going to school in Sarasota County, they're a Sarasota County student. We shouldn't be cherry picking. I don't think that sends a good message. I don't think, from the cultural standpoint, that's the right way to go. And then also, I mean, there are a number of examples where I think that supports why this makes sense. But, so I'm excited to see us do this. I'm excited that they're successful. And so, from a personal opinion, I'm obviously in support of that. Shirley.
Their numbers are reported, and their grades are reported with our school district. So, and as Eric pointed out, so don't say that I never listen to what you two are saying. Because you're right, if they're being reported with our grades, and we don't have any other middle schools to offer, in order to make a middle school in Inglewood, I don't want to say profitable, because it's not profitable. What's sensible would probably be that we'd have to attract some Charlotte County students there. So in order to help those Sarasota County students who live in Inglewood have an option for a middle school, I will change my mind on this.
Well, and of course, we don't make any formal action at this workshop, but for discussion purposes, I think it...
I have the direction I sought. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mitzi.
And we'll see these modifications on the next budget amendment, so.
That is all we have. I know this was a little different.
Share this one more. Page two.
Okay, Dr. Bowden, one more. Oh, forgive me. I'm sorry, I don't have an update. But yes, the Bright Futures, Shirley.
I know we've already set our legislative agenda, but I would just like to be able to tell our lobbyists that we support Senator Galvano's bill to bring the back Bright Futures scholarships back to where they used to be. And I guess we've been doing it through the budget, they've been doing it through the budget. And he wants to put it back into law, that the academic scholars, those who get 3.5 or higher, or score 1290 or 29 on the SAT, get 100%. And the medallion scholars, at 75%. And I think it's good that we put it back into law. It had been changed during rough times. And, you know, I would just like to be able to tell our lobbyists that we support Senate Bill Four, I guess it's CS for Senate Bill Four, and have our legislators, you know, ask them to co-sponsor it. I think it would be, it would be good for our citizens, because it comes directly from lottery dollars. And this is a way, I remember 1997, I was the co-sponsor of the bill. And we wanted to be able to tell the people something that we do with our lottery dollars. I think it's a good bill, and I'm glad to see it, that it's coming back.
Caroline.
This is a little different, because this bill specifically tells you what courses that the students can qualify for at Bright Futures. There's nothing about liberal arts in here at all. It's math, law, a doctorate, a lawyer, something else. But it's all in that frame, Mike. Professional and graduate schools and degree programs in medicine, law, and business, and expand the economic impact of the state universities. Nothing about a liberal education or an arts education. And they also are eliminating the sunshine law. So if you go to page 11 out of 33, it says, "And any supplemental data requested by the Board of Governors, the University Board of Trustees, and the Office of Program Policy Analysis and Government Accountability shall be confidential and exempt from statute." So if we want to support something, and we're all about transparency, this does not have transparency in here, nor does it address part of our...
I will withhold that action until we get further answers on those, then.
Eric.
I somewhat agree with Caroline. I think that we should, if we were going to say anything, is that we support the expansion of the Bright Futures Scholarship for dying and funding. But there are some things in this bill that, you know, aren't helpful, particularly not helpful to state colleges.
Right.
Yeah, it's really, it's really going to fund, you know, the preeminent research, so I'm glad it's going to help the University of Florida. But it does, it does...
And Florida State University, for the record.
No, it said preeminent. It said preeminent. It said preeminent research facility. But, for example, it doesn't allow us to charge fees to Bright Futures scholar, we, I'm sorry. It doesn't allow State College of Florida to charge their fees that we have in the past, when those fees are for actual costs that we, that SCF incurs. I'm sorry, I used to be on the SCF Board, so I say, tend to say "we" when we talk about SCF. And so there were other fees that SCF would have to take up. And the other thing is it allows non-Florida residents to pay the Florida rate, which, especially community colleges. I know, we have a tight budget with the amount of money we get. I mean, they do everything on $4,000 per student.
Yeah, man, it's amazing.
That is amazing. So to cut that number even farther, I don't, I would have a hard time supporting. But if you wanted to say something about, we support Bright Futures, and, you know, that kind of, you know, generic, I don't have a problem with that. But I also want to make sure the lobbyist knows that this does not supplant his number one goal, to get summer learning academies over the summer, that that's his number one goal, and that if we bring up these other issues, that those are all supplemental things, and that the number one goal stays the number one goal, and it's not meant to distract. Because this is a grandiose goal that associations are more inclined to do, not Sarasota for Champion. But I would not have a problem with us coming up with something, saying that we support the expansion of Bright Futures.
Well, I...
Rather than actually talking about the elements of the digital bill.
Caroline, and then Shirley.
In here, they specifically say to recruit from other states. So, I mean, I'm not going to support this. I'm not. Because we have enough with finding the funds to support our own students from here in Florida. Nevertheless, to recruit students in...
Other states.
Well, how about this, that, you know, it's a bill, it's a low-numbered Senate bill, has a high chance of passing. So with that in mind, I think we need to all look at the bill closely, and if there's any things that we have a problem with, that we might want to get either to the bill sponsor or to education committees or our staff, and let our staff, our legislators, and let them know what problems we have and what they are. Because it's a bill that'll probably pass, and if there's some issues on it, we probably ought to bring them up with the legislature.
So two things. One, I really appreciate you bringing it to the attention and for discussion, if it were to be considered as something that our lobbyists would be either waving in support or not. You know, I think that there are a lot of good points made here. I know that it is certainly a high priority of the Senate, and to Shirley's point, it's very likely to succeed in some fashion. But is that the role that we want to play as the Sarasota County School Board or not? And my personal opinion is, as it gets that granular, I would caution us to, and be laser-focused on the Sarasota priorities, and leave the other elements, the broader ones, to some of the associations or, but, but I think that, from a strategy standpoint, I see where you are coming from, Shirley. But I think a broader stroke, and maybe trying to work on some of the language, but I'm laser-focused, if we're spending the money on that lobbyist, I want them to only be talking about Sarasota County schools. So that's just my personal opinion. So I don't know, from a next step standpoint, Shirley, you had any thoughts? Or Caroline?
I totally agree with you. I mean, this is not, this is not pertaining to our needs.
But I see, and I see the, but I also, I really can't stress enough, I appreciate you bringing it forward, because I think that we need to be on the same page if our lobbyist is speaking for us, so.
I did read the whole thing.
Very good.
And I don't like to read bills, but I read this whole thing.
Is there any other comments? Are there any other topics? We have 10 minutes before we get the boot. Anything?
Nothing.
All right.
Oh, if you want, if you want to expand something, I can talk about, I can talk about what I've been doing for the last week, and that is doing science fairs. And it was quite interesting for me. It's something that I've never done before. So I went to a low socioeconomic, a middle, and a high socioeconomic school, and judged science programs in all three of them. And you can see where the help is from the parents, and where there's a lack of help. And it was just, it just became so vivid to me in doing this this way, which I didn't even plan until I started. And I thought, oh my God, now you can see exactly where we need to help, and how they've, how their science projects turned out. And one young girl told me that. I said, you know what you have to do now? And she said, yes, I have to tell my mother to give me more time. I said, no, I think you have to start your science project earlier. So it was interesting. And then also at ME Booker, one night last week, there was a great parent group that was there. And they had, the robotics was there, and the science fair was in there. And it was just phenomenal to see the number of parents there with their students.
Excellent.
If I can just jump in here, it will help me out at home. But I made a statement shortly after becoming superintendent last year. I was speaking at an award ceremony for the science fair, and I flippantly said something about neither one of my children are here tonight. And by the time I got home, they had received text messages from their friends in the audience. And so my son, after being recognized with the best science fair project for 7th graders at MacIntosh, wanted to know if I would then be saying something publicly this year about him. So if you're watching, I just did.
Oh, that's good. Very good. Well, any, judging, those are a lot of fun. I am wildly impressed, but science was never my subject, so. All right, with nothing else, we are adjourned.